Our presentation can be recorded today. So, thank you so much for having me back. We have at least one person who was here last time. We might have had others who were with us as well. My name is David Nash. I'm the director of a program that's called Legal One. We do school law training for parents, teachers, counselors, administrators, everybody involved in our schools to try to help everyone understand important legal issues. And certainly, nothing is more important than the things that we need to do to keep all of our students safe and to deal with issues like bullying. So, this is part of a larger effort, working with the Bayonne School District to do a parent academy this year. So, I'm encouraged. We have more people than last time. But, my hope is that for the next session, we have a full auditorium. The idea here is to try to work closely with all of you to be partners on a whole range of important issues for kids. So, my background, before I served in this current role, running the Legal One program, I served as legal counsel for New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, and I represented school administrators when legal issues came up related to their employment. As I did that work, it occurred to me, it's good to help everybody think through these issues before a problem comes up. So, that's the idea of Legal One, to try to help everyone work together to understand and proactively deal with potential issues and prevent those issues if we can. The academy that we're working through this year includes some online pieces too, for anyone who's interested. We did three short videos, each about 15 minutes long, that walk through examples of issues that are either bullying or conflict. So, just some good concrete examples. I talked about them at the first session, but we also have videos that walk through all of those examples. This is the full schedule of the dates and topics that we're covering for the year. So, we are covering, at our next session, a more detailed discussion about cyberbullying and internet safety. And that's a huge issue, and a really complicated one. Sometimes, there could be a danger that we sort of demonize social media. It's not all bad. There are lots of good things. Good to see you. Lots of good things that happen on social media, but there also can be some really challenging things that happen. And we want to understand how we can work with our kids, work with schools, to make sure that we're keeping kids safe when it comes to social media and cyber issues. We're also going to do a session on addressing student substance use. And obviously, there's lots of challenges on that front, and understanding some of the latest trends and some of the latest issues there. We'll do a session on addressing social and emotional well-being of children. Always really important, but obviously, in the light of what we've been through for the last couple of years, the needs are even greater. So, we'll talk about how schools and families can work together on that front. And we'll do a session on effective parent and staff communication, just how important it is for everyone to communicate with each other whenever we become aware of any potential issues. So...
That one's making a weird noise.
Oh. All right. So, we're also doing a prerecorded session on supporting LGBTQ plus students. So, that's not going to be a live session, but we're going to make that available for anyone who's interested as well. For those who were here last time, you heard this. Technically, as we talk today, I'm not giving legal advice, right? So, I'm not here to advise on handling any particular incident. I'm just trying to help you understand the state of the law in New Jersey, some key legal principles, some strategies for how schools and families can work together on these issues. I invite questions, but if you ask me questions about particular incidents, I just have to assume you're asking me a hypothetical. I can't actually give advice on a particular matter, because I wouldn't have all the facts on that issue, and that's not my role. But please jump in with questions as hypotheticals, and they can help everybody. So, just a quick review from our first session. You know, there is a big difference between bullying and conflict. And we're going to talk about New Jersey's definition of bullying and some key issues. The simple way to think about the difference between bullying and conflict, conflict really is when two students are mutually engaged. You know, sometimes there's a disagreement between kids, and it happens over lots of issues. And both students might say things that are inappropriate. Both students might say things that are a little bit hurtful of the other student. When you have a situation like that, and two students are mutually engaged, you have what is probably a conflict. And you might have a student say something inappropriate to a student on one particular day, but the conflict might have been going on for weeks. So, we can't look at these issues in isolation. And that's part of what a school district has to do if something comes to their attention, to look at what actually happened that day, in that particular incident that we're trying to learn about, but also figure out, is there some larger context? Is there something that went on before? Are there things going on after? So, it matters to try to figure out, what do we do about it? Because we respond very differently if we have a conflict than if you have a bullying situation where one student is really being targeted, and the other is very much the aggressor. Very different types of situations. And we do have, as we're talking about these issues, you know, some very serious issues that could come up. And that's why we're going to do a session just on cyber harassment and cybersecurity and cyberbullying. New Jersey actually has a statute on the book that talks about the crime of cyber harassment. Now thankfully, the vast majority of what we're talking about is not a crime, right? But, you could have behavior that crosses that line. So, if you have a student who's engaged in social media, other forms of electronic communication, and they're targeting another student and threatening things like serious bodily injury, now we could be crossing the line into a potential crime. And oftentimes, we know kids will say things, but they don't really mean it. You know, they'll say, "I'm going to kill you. I'm going to get you. I'm going to do X, Y, or Z." Judges don't always know whether the student means it or not. Do we have a question? Bathroom. Bathroom? Yep. Do you want to point?
I don't know what you're asking.
There you go. All right. So, the crime of cyber harassment, you're threatening to inflict injury on a person or their property. You're sending inappropriate images with the intent to cause emotional harm to somebody or place them in fear of harm. Question.
Would that be considered if, say, there was a fight, and people on the side, they take their video to their computer and they send it to everybody?
So, yeah, for those who didn't hear, question was, let's say there's a fight going on between two students, and somebody else takes a video of that, and they post it online. Yes, that could get to the point where the video is causing additional harm. And oftentimes, it's a huge harm when you put these things online. So, yes, now you have to look at the facts in every particular case, but that could end up falling into this, right? It's up to a judge to decide that, not to a school district. But that absolutely could happen. So, basics of New Jersey law. New Jersey has a specific definition of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And for better and worse, New Jersey defines that as one thing. So, somebody says, "I'm being bullied," that has a specific legal meaning. If a student says, "I feel intimidated," that has the same legal meaning in New Jersey. Or, "I'm being harassed," that has the same meaning. So, if a school official hears any of those words, "I'm being harassed, intimidated, or bullied," we have to respond basically the same way, to look into that issue and investigate what's really going on. So, it could be gestures, could be something that's written, could be verbal, could be physical, could be electronic communication. Often, it's a combination of those things, right? Kids don't do things in isolation. You say something hurtful, you go home, you post something online that makes the situation even worse. Maybe there's some physical piece to it as well. Maybe there are some gestures the next day in school. You know, oftentimes, it's more than one thing. And trying to figure out all the different parts of a case can be challenging. You can have bullying that is a single incident. It doesn't have to be an ongoing pattern of behavior, but usually it is. Usually, when we find out about something, unfortunately, it's gone on for some period of time. One student has targeted another for a while. But even a one-time incident can be bad enough that it's bullying. So, it's really important for school officials to learn about something earlier rather than later. Don't wait for the third, or fourth, or fifth incident before you let somebody in the school know that you have a potential issue. And ideally, the best person to let know is the school principal. If you tell anyone, if you tell a teacher, you tell a paraprofessional, you tell anyone in that building, they're going to have to tell the principal. But to sort of cut out the middleman and make sure there's no misunderstanding, to directly get to the principal is the best approach on these issues. But you want to tell somebody in the school. So, these issues could happen anywhere. Don't feel like, "Well, I'm not going to tell the school unless something happens to my child in school." New Jersey has recognized, let's say, one student does something that's really embarrassing or demeaning to another student on the weekend. Well, those students don't forget about it on Monday, when they come back into school. They're still embarrassed, they're still demeaned. The harm probably gets even worse, because a lot of other kids have heard about it, and the situation has spread. So, if something happens to your child on the weekend, over a break, let school officials know that too, because that also becomes their issue if it comes into school, and unfortunately, it usually does.
If you bring something to the principal's attention, you're worried that maybe your child was a victim of bullying. So, now you have informed the principal. The next step ideally for you to take would be to put whatever you said verbally in writing. And that's really helpful, so that there's no misunderstanding about what you said. So, New Jersey has a form that we put out this year. I shouldn't say "we," it's them, it's the Department of Ed. But the Department of Ed put out a form this year that schools are now making available to parents, so that you can report these issues. Give as much detail as you can. Now, the school principal will look at the allegation, and assuming what you're saying meets this definition, they're going to give it to an anti-bullying specialist to start an investigation within one school day. So, that means if you tell the principal on Friday, by Monday, assuming their school on Monday, the investigation is going to start. Okay? And then, the school has 10 school days to do the investigation.
Okay. Sorry. But you just got to, because it doesn't happen in one day.
Yeah. And in fairness, you know, in many districts, you don't finish the process in one day. So, you have 10 school days to actually do the investigation.
Once the investigation starts, do we get notified?
Yes. So, you are notified that there has been an allegation of bullying, and the district has started an investigation. And then, you're notified when the investigation is completed, and the conclusion is reached about the issue.
So, is the investigation not, does the school not start an investigation unless you've filled out that form? Let's say verbally, you actually had a meeting, right?
Yep.
Principal, vice-principal, everyone, like the guidance counselor, and the school they live in. Do they not start that type of investigation, I guess?
Yeah. The obligation is to start the investigation once you learn about the incident. So, even if you haven't filled out the written form yet, the district has to do the investigation. So, it's possible that for whatever reason, you know, you never get around to filling out the written form. If that happens, now whoever you told has to fill out a written form and kind of record or document whatever you told them. Now, it's much easier if you do it yourself in writing, so there's no misunderstanding. But if for some reason, a parent didn't do that, now the school employee would have to do it, whoever was told about the issue. Well, you have a right to...
Do they have that?
Yes. The parent has a right to see that information. Now, you don't get to see it, you know, day one. The district gets to do their investigation. District does their investigation within the 10 school days, and, you know, then they have two more days to write a report. Then, the information goes to the superintendent. Now, you're informed of the outcome of the investigation.
Because obviously hypothetically...
Hypothetically, yeah.
If you have heard, an incident was brought up, children had some consequences, because it was an incident from the school. However, we never got anything as well as the investigation heard and...
Yeah.
And we asked, and they said, "Well, I thought we could have deep grave investigation."
On the consequences? And they said that we're not allowed to know.
Well, that's true. So, for those who aren't hearing, yeah, so I'll mention that issue. Let's say that, you know, you bring an issue to the attention of school officials, and another student did something inappropriate, targeting your child. District investigates, finds out it did happen, imposes consequences. They're not allowed, under state and federal law, to tell you the details of what they did, what the consequences were.
How are we supposed to know? How are we supposed to know what's going on?
Yeah. So, you are allowed to know that...
Why turn something in if we're not going to have to communicate?
No, it's a good question. So, let me walk through what you are allowed to know.
Every year, they say, "Parents and teachers are supposed to work together."
Yep.
But nothing happens. I mean, like, we can, you know, like, we can bring stuff up, but we don't get anything in return.
Yeah. So, let me tell you what you're allowed to get in return. And that's part of why we're doing this, so you know your rights in this whole process. You're allowed to know what the outcome of the investigation is. You're allowed to know if discipline was imposed.
We found that out.
Well, yeah, that's often how you find out. But you're allowed to know from the school. They have to tell you that, yes, we imposed discipline. And then, often, you figure it out. If the other student's not in school the next couple of days, you figure out what the discipline was, but the school can't officially tell you that. But they can tell you, yes, you're right, this did happen, there was discipline imposed.
And the principal knows that. Okay, now, to me, what you're telling me, it seems that the school has every right, but we don't have the right to know anything, because of the simple fact that you're saying under fish law and under law. How, why is it okay for a principal to come and imitate a 13-year-old to get answers? But when I tell the principal, "No, you're not allowed to talk to my kid unless I'm present," and they're telling me that in my building, I have every right to move your son and get anything, what's going on? Because a 13-year-old is just going to come and say, "You get hold in the office." You're already scared that you're coming, that you're vulnerable, they're in trouble to get involved in the office. But I don't get any answers from the principal.
Yeah. So, I want to make sure that everyone hears the questions, right? Good question. Let's say something comes up, and a student has to be questioned. The best chance to figure out what really happened in an incident is to talk to kids quickly about what happened. The more time passes, the more memories start to fade, the more, let's say, if students weren't going to be truthful, they start to talk to their friends and kind of coordinate stories. So, U.S. Supreme Court looked at this issue way back in 1975, and said that in order for schools to be able to function, principals and other administrators have to be able to talk to kids right away, sometimes within minutes, to try to get their side of the story, try to figure out what happened. That's why school officials talk to students without parents necessarily being there or having that prior notice, because it's the best chance to figure out what happened and to keep everyone safe. It's never okay, you know, part of what you said was, why is it okay for the principal to intimidate kids? That's never okay, right?
If you're talking about kids who have been bullied by, as your child, who's been bullied or whatever you want to call it, harassed by the other four. So, now, the other four are together, you know what, right? And the principal said, "Is this what happened? Your friend?" So, you're going to agree, yes, that's what happened, right? So, you're the first child, they ask, "What happened?" And you go, "This, this, this, this." And then, they look to your friend, and they go, "Is that the case? Is that what you saw?" And they're going, "Of course." And now, it's your kid saying, "That's not the case against four other kids, four friends, sticking up for each other." So, how is it evident to me?
Sure. So, let me talk about that. Part of the challenge for school principals, so the question again was, let's say you have an issue, and one student allegedly is being targeted by four other kids. Boy, you know, if you bring all five of them into a room together, it's going to be hard to actually get a straight story about what happened, because the four are going to just say the same thing, and the one's going to be fearful with the other four in the same room. So, part of the problem in New Jersey is that principals, as part of their graduate work, and as part of their training in higher ed, you didn't get training on questioning techniques. But we have now been providing some training for school principals in Bayonne. So, one of the strategies that we talked about in that training was to always talk to students individually, one at a time, not have them together, because that can create a real problem. Students are fearful, they start looking at each other, trying to coordinate stories. So, the best practice that I believe the district is following now is to talk to students one at a time.
So, our number-one conversation has been with all the kids at the school.
Yeah. So, I can't comment on that. All I can say is, I'll tell you, the training that we do is that we should be doing those questionings to get the best chance to figure out what happened one at a time. So, that's a training that we provide.
So, you're... ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Yeah, I mean, you start, all of that is relevant to figure out what's going on. When you see one student who's constantly being accused of bullying, you know, that matters. It doesn't mean they're guilty, but that's something that you're going to consider. Ten school days. So, you learn about a situation. Now, 99% of the time, that's plenty of time. I'll give you an example where it might not be. Let's say you have a cyberbullying issue and a lot of kids got involved. And there's 100 students who all potentially said inappropriate things and might have been involved. It might not be feasible to finish that investigation and interview everybody in those 10 days, but the district still has to, at the end of those 10 days, put together a report, which they have to do in two more days. The report might say we're not done yet because there were 100 people to interview. So, that's the only exception you'd see, right? So, in order to have bullying, you do have to have a motive. Sometimes, it can be frustrating, right? Sometimes, we know one student did something hurtful to another student. That's a simple example, one student hits another student. And you know that's inappropriate, you know that there's going to have to be discipline, but you don't know why. So, New Jersey says we can't call it bullying unless we figure out the why. You have to get to, what was the characteristic? Question? The legislature decided in New Jersey there has to be a why. But it's only to call it bullying. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that it's ever okay for one student to do something, you know, to hit other kids. So, even if we can't figure out why, there's still code of conduct violations. It's still inappropriate, there's still going to be discipline. No, there's, I mean... Sure. No, that's, I mean, let me say this. Again, I can't comment on any specific incident, right? All I can talk about is hypotheticals. But if one student pushes another student and a student falls down and, you know, is hit and hurt, and the school confirms that it happened, that's a violation of the code of conduct, there should be some consequence for that. So, go ahead. Yeah, so, the part of the, that's right, so... Yep, so, part of the problem might be that you don't know what the discipline was, but if you asked a different question, was there discipline? You can get an answer, yes, there was. Looks like... Looks like we have a young questioner. Go ahead. So, good question. For those who didn't hear, and, you know, it's horrible if anything like that ever happens, right? So, if somebody is going after you, hurting you, pushing you, you have, you do have a right to try to protect yourself, right? Now, that's very different than sort of choosing to engage when you're not just defending yourself in that moment. Sometimes, you have no choice to do something to try to keep yourself safe in the moment. So, yes, that matters, school officials need to understand that. In a lot of situations, sometimes, students choose to engage when they don't have to. And that's different. But if you're just trying to keep yourself safe in the moment, you want to just get the principal, the teacher, everybody to understand that, understand what happened. That's never okay for someone to get targeted like that, okay? You can defend yourself in the moment. So, the key, so, the legal question to think about is, was there another option? The way that was, the way that situation was described to me, there was really no other option in that moment. So, that's what school principal has to figure out. In many cases, there is another option. There's somewhere you can, you can walk away to, there's someone you can ask for help. If there's no option left, that's different. So, that's part of what you have to try to explain. Go ahead. So, if you tell a teacher or somebody else that a student put their hands on you, the district should investigate that. And if it turns out that they can prove it happened, that student should have consequences. That's the way, you shouldn't have to sort of take the law into your own hands on an issue like that. That's why it's better to tell adults. The problem, unfortunately, sometimes, is that maybe nobody sees it, right? Maybe there's nothing that can sort of prove that it really happened. And that's really hard. You know, I wish teachers could be all places at all times and see everything. Sometimes, we don't see something and sometimes, there's no witnesses to an issue. But if there is some evidence to back up that this really happened, there has to be consequences, right? That's never okay. So, that's something to talk with the district about, maybe looking at other strategies so that everyone else doesn't see, you know, where the student is going and the fact that they're going to counselor's office. Sometimes, you can do some creative things and, you know, you can meet with the student somewhere else in the school. So, it's not quite so obvious where that student's going in that moment. Something called portal-to-portal is the phrase, kind of going to school and come, yeah. Sure. Yeah, so, let's talk about that. It's really... Transportation is if you're a certain distance away, yeah. So, let's talk about that issue. If something happens to a child when they're, you know, walking home from school, again, school officials aren't responsible because they just can't do it. They can't be all places at all times. But, once they learn about that issue, that's where their responsibility kicks in to respond to it. So, if you can confirm that a child was harmed walking home by other students, well, now, there needs to be consequences for that behavior. So, that's the part that they can do, imposing discipline, imposing consequences. But unfortunately, they just don't have the resources to physically transport that child back and forth to and from school. But it's really important to let school officials know when those things are happening. So, there is responsibility, but it's not everything. It's not like now, we're going to drive that student directly to and from school. So, it's a really good question. We do have to have for bullying, substantial disruption. And, you know, you know your kids really well. Sometimes, things happen and students move on really quickly, right? Something might happen and you're really upset that somebody said something hurtful to your child, but your child has quickly moved on. It's still not okay, right? Somebody says something, let's say somebody says something discriminatory to your child. It's never okay, there need to be consequences. But New Jersey says it's not bullying unless it causes substantial disruption, which means it has to have some lasting impact on the child. And different kids react differently to situations. So, you always want to bring the issue to the district's attention, but the outcome of the bullying investigation might be different depending on the impact it had on your child as compared to another child. Doesn't excuse the behavior, doesn't mean that there won't be a consequence, it just might change the label that we put on the behavior, whether or not we call it bullying. And that's New Jersey law, that's not Bayonne. That's what state of New Jersey says on this issue. So, you also have to prove, in order for that bullying, one of these three, not all three, but at least one of them, physical or emotional harm, or the student is fearful of physical or emotional harm, or something that's demeaning to the student or a group the student's part of, or something that creates a hostile educational environment. The student can't really function well in school. So, we can't call something bullying unless we have at least one of those three. And again, you have really useful information to help the school figure out, do we have that in any particular case? What's that? I'm sure, but that's the state's page, right? That's their list that we have to follow. The law did change in January of this year. So, there are some changes that wanted to affect with this school year as of July. One part to those changes says that if a student is guilty of cyber harassment, so, that's not most bullying, but once in a while, you have a really serious incident that actually rises to the level of a crime, where one student targets another through electronic communications, social media, and a municipal court judge gets involved. In a case like that, the judge could order the parent of that student to attend a class or a training program, and if they don't do it, they could start fining the parent. And, the parent of a victim could directly sue the parent of the aggressor if the parent of the aggressor was actively encouraging the bad behavior or completely ignoring the bad behavior that was happening with their child. So, again, that's not most cases. Most parents are trying to get their kids to do the right thing. But does it happen? Yes, it has happened, where sometimes, you'll have a parent who actually is encouraging the bad behavior. So, for those examples, the parent could have some potential monetary responsibility. School district is allowed to do what's called a preliminary determination. They have a local policy that's permitted under state law. Sometimes, a child might use the word bullying, but what they described isn't really bullying. So, a child's upset they weren't invited to a birthday party, and they feel left out. We can't force kids to socialize outside of school. We can't force kids to invite others to socialize with them. So, that might be an example that even if the allegation is true, it wouldn't be bullying. So, that's an example where the, where the school district could say, "All right, I know you used that word, but we're not going to do a bullying investigation." Now, you still have to know about it. So, you still would have to be informed, as the parent of that child, that, you know, you got this information and for this reason, you're not starting a bullying investigation. And if you disagree, you can appeal that and go to the board and say, "We think they got it wrong, we think they should have done a bullying investigation." And if you disagree there, you could appeal that and go to the state and say, "We think the district got it wrong on that issue." The same thing is true at the out, at the end of a bullying investigation. You think a district got the investigation wrong, you can appeal to the state of New Jersey. And we have had a few cases where the commissioner has overturned the school district and said the district got it wrong. So, you always have those rights. And you also have the right, under state and federal law, if you think your child is being discriminated against. They're being singled out because of their race, their gender, ethnicity, religion, disability, any protected class, there's always the right to bring a discrimination claim under state or federal law. So, those are rights that you always have. If that preliminary decision is made, again, you are notified about that. There was another change in the law. Question? Well, I need more information, right? So, the question was, somebody says something to another student and it's insensitive and it's linked to a protected class like race or gender or sexual orientation. Part of what you have to ask is, given the age of the child, what should you have understood? So, you're going to have a different standard for a kindergartner versus a high school student, what they, what you would expect them to understand. You know, the kindergartner might be repeating a word that they heard, but not even understand what they're saying. High school student would be expected to know more. So, that's part of what you have to look at. And you have to also look at, did it actually cause harm? You might have said something that was inappropriate, the other student, you know, didn't think twice about it, didn't cause harm. So, that matters too, in the analysis. Sometimes, I hate to say it, sometimes, kids use inappropriate language with each other. It's not okay, but it might not be bullying, depending on whether it actually caused harm. Intending it. Yeah, so, let me try to clarify what I said last time, right? And I'm glad you're here because you're, you're good. So, let's say a student says, "That's so gay." And, you know, they're not even thinking about somebody's sexual orientation when they make that comment. But another student who happens to be gay hears the comment, and it really is hurtful and it's upsetting to that student and it causes disruption. That's where we ask, what should the student who made the comment have known? So, if you're 12, 13, or 14, you should know, when you say something like that, it could be really hurtful. You're five, six, or seven, you might not understand. So, you don't have to have intent, but it does matter how old you are and what you are expected to understand. The older you are, the more you're expected to understand about the potential impact of what you're saying. Kid didn't know. So, good question. You make a comment like, "That's so gay." Depending on your age, you should understand there might be someone who's gay in the class. Right? Again, a six-year-old's not going to understand that. New Jersey says a 12-year-old probably should. Even if they haven't come out, you should understand there might be a child who happens to be gay in that class and it could cause harm. So, that's why, you know, we do expect even kids to think about, what's the potential impact of what I'm saying? And that's part of what we talk about in school. And the standards get higher and higher the older you get. You know, you're expected to know more. So, good questions, keep them coming, you're very good. If you have a student who commits a second or a third act of bullying, you know, we are documenting that. So, the first act is in the student's record. New Jersey made that really clear, it's there. Second act is in the record. Third act involving the same student, now, you're going to have to have an individual plan, just for that student, to figure out, how do we change this behavior? How do we try to get through to the student, have the student stop engaging in bullying over and over again? So, that's a new requirement. Brand new. Yeah, started as of July of this year. It passed in January, wanted to affect in July. So, as of July of this year, and we're not counting prior incidents, but going forward, if we get to a third incident, there has to be an individual student intervention plan. Please. Sure. Okay. Yeah, great question. So, something happens in elementary school and it's found to be bullying, and let's say the child transfers districts, goes somewhere else, and now, they're in middle school or high school. That information does follow the child to the new school district. They get that information that there was an incident. Now, that information that happened in elementary school never goes to a college, can't go to an employer, so, they're not entitled to any of that information. The other school district is, unless the district has decided that it's no longer educationally relevant. So, you did something in kindergarten, turns out, it was bullying, and you haven't done anything else and we're now in eighth grade. District could look at that issue and make that decision. The problem is that New Jersey just changed the law and it gets a lot harder to do that because New Jersey is saying that you need to know, at least if it's in your own district and the child hasn't moved, you need to know if there is a first, second, and third incident, even if they happen years apart. So, really, the only time you can make that decision is when the child is either about to graduate or about to leave your district. That might be the only times the district could say, "This is no longer educationally relevant and we're not going to keep it in the file." Because New Jersey changed the law on that issue. Yes, and of course, the parent can make a request. Parent can make a request and say, "This is no longer educationally relevant, I don't think this should be here any longer." And then, the school district considers that request. If the parent disagrees with the district's decision, you have rights to appeal that, right? The problem is, if you're not moving, if you're not transferring districts, the district doesn't really have that option. For the entire time they have your child, they have to keep track of the incidents, even if they happen years apart. The only time they really have that option is when you're moving from one district to another. Yep? Well, it possibly doesn't follow them if the district made the decision that the information was no longer educationally relevant. That's the time when it wouldn't follow. Now, in many cases, the district might think it still is relevant, right? And now, the discipline information does... And now the discipline information does follow the child to the new district. So, it depends on... Yes. Yes, absolutely. So, I think it is a good point and it's something to educate parents about, but you want to understand the limits of it because, again, you really don't have that option if you're not moving out of the district. You're still here, district is kind of forced to keep that information the whole time. The only real option is when you're moving or about to graduate. Yeah. Go ahead.
What happens when you have multiple incidences? HIVs, they're all unfounded, and then more stuff happens and you go to the proper people, the principal, the counselor, whoever it may be, and the answer is always, always. Can you hear that, Ms. Rollers on tape? Always. I didn't know this was happening. I didn't know this was happening. Well, when you tell your children, right, if I can speak for... You tell your children if you see something, say something, correct? Right? If something is going wrong, you tell them to do that. And they go and tell somebody. They tell it at all. A janitor, a teacher, a counselor, whoever it may be. And then they go and relate, they're supposed to say, don't worry, I'm going to go talk to the principal.
Okay.
Because then the student is too scared to be seen talking to somebody in, you know, a job of control or whatever it is. And then the answer is, I didn't know about it. I didn't know about it. I didn't know that kids were being whipped in the bathroom. I didn't see that video, but an assistant principal saw it. So where do you go from there when the person in charge that has your child for the day because they aren't supposed to take care of them and the person in charge just says, I didn't know anything about it? Or you get the teachers that were there that did see stuff, that did say, stop it, Johnny, Maggie, whatever it is, stop it, or you go to the principal. Then you do the HIV investigation and that teacher lies and doesn't say, I didn't see it. They say, I didn't see it. But everybody in the class heard the teacher say, Johnny, stop touching Stephanie. And the teacher lies.
So unfortunately, unfortunately, we do have cases where staff members do bad things. Right? Across the country, this happens. Now, it doesn't happen very often. Most staff members are trying to help kids, trying to do the right thing, but we have documented cases where teachers and others have done things that are inappropriate. The school district has to investigate and figure out what happened. So you take the statement from the teacher, you take statements from kids in the class, and you try to figure out what happened. Sometimes it's really hard when you're getting conflicting information. You have some students saying one thing, some students saying something else, some adults saying one thing, some adults saying something else. And you do the best you can to assess credibility, look at the evidence, and figure out what happened. If everyone says the same thing, it's really simple, but a lot of our cases aren't like that. You're getting really conflicting evidence and testimony and information.
Okay. What you just said, you know, if everything's... See, here's the thing. There's a group of kids, a group of bullies.
Yeah.
They all know, they rule the school, and if you don't conform to what they do, then you are the one that they're going to pick on. So you have a group of bullies that know, that know there's going to be an HIV. Because they're not stupid. They're not stupid by any stretch of the imagination. So then they all sit around on a street corner, at lunch, after school, well, let's make sure we all get our statements straight and we're all going to say the same exact thing in the statements. So the poor kid that is being bullied and pushed around continues to get bullied because, well, nothing happened because everybody said the same exact story.
Yeah.
And these adults believe it.
So part of the training that we've been providing over this last year to school administrators is to try to test the credibility of what kids are telling us. It's not just the number of people who say something, it's how credible their story is. So I'll give you, you know, one example about how you might test credibility. Student tells you what happened and, you know, two or three kids basically memorized the same lie. But you then ask them to describe the scene. Who was there? Where was everyone standing? What were they doing? And they didn't think about that stuff. They just thought about the simple lie and the story starts to fall apart. You talk to the one student who was targeted, who's the victim, who's telling the truth, and they say the same thing over and over again. So part of the training that we're providing is to try to get everyone to understand, it's not just the number of witnesses, it's how consistent and credible their story is. And sometimes, the lesser number of witnesses have the more credible story. You have to kind of test that out. Yes. Well, I think it's... Yeah. So, good... Yeah. So, New Jersey law says who has to do the investigation. And districts can't change that, right? That's the sort of thing you'd have to change with the legislature and the governor. New Jersey law says it has to be an employee in that school who's designated as the anti-bullying specialist, who is the lead investigator. So, you know, you raise a lot of good points, but that's, the district can't change that, right? That's a matter of state law. Now... Yeah. 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 I hear what you're saying. I can tell you that, you know, a lot of people who are asked to do this, nobody's thrilled to have to do bullying investigations, right? Counselors who are doing this, it wasn't their dream job to investigate bullying issues, but they've been designated as the anti-bullying specialist. Yeah. I mean, I agree, there is such a huge need for additional mental health supports. There's no question, we, you know, we need a lot more resources than we have. But the district is committed to addressing the issue. You know, they only have so many resources, but I can tell you, they're working really hard to address mental health for all of our students. It is. No question. No. Yeah. Of course, of course. No question.
Jennifer, can I address that? The pandemic, the COVID. That's been our excuse for all of COVID. Every single time. Every single time. It's been COVID.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. A hundred percent.
Yeah.
Let these kids go home to school and continue to do what they want and they are running to asylum. It is, they're running to asylum and telling other kids to go home and kill themselves. That is what it's going to take. It's going to take another kid in this school district before anybody does anything.
So let me...
We want to jump off the bridge. We had two students that unfortunately drowned. What more is it going to take? Is it going to take your daughter to die? Is it going to take my daughter to die before anybody gets their act together in the school? And as you can see, there is nobody from the board of that year. Nobody. So that should tell you a lot.
So let me try to get us back on track. Question? Yeah, that's scary. Well, but what's really important is for you to, I'm sure you're doing this, but to take the time to document to the school, the fears of your child and why they don't want to go to school. Yeah, it's a huge problem when you get to the point that kids are fearful to come to school and you want to work with the district to have an overall plan to address that. But you want to ask for, you know, a written plan and kind of give some ideas for what that might look like. Yeah, I think the biggest thing to do in a case like that is to keep documenting why your child is fearful to come to school. And putting things in writing is really important on an issue like that.
As a student, there is nothing that the school does to help the child be in a more safer environment. The only thing that they would really do if it's someone in their class is going to switch the class. So either the victim is going to be switched to a new class or the intended is going to be switched to a new class. And no matter what, it's not going to stop the situation. It's not. Newer times out of 10, it's just going to continue, whether it's online, it's after school, whispers are going to be going on in the hallways as to why so-and-so got switched to a new class. No matter what, there's always going to be no thing to actually help the child.
I know that there are situations that keep going on and on, but there's also lots of examples where the bullying stops, right? So if a situation keeps happening, we have to just keep reporting it and making sure that the school knows that there's a new incident. Something else happened. Every time, the district has to investigate, has to respond, has to deal with it. So every time you find out about some new issue, immediately let a teacher or principal, somebody know, there's a new issue and we're going to have to deal with everyone. I'd hate to think that anyone should feel like it's hopeless because there are plenty of examples where the behavior does stop. Well, it's never okay. Right? So it's never okay to just decide that we're going to take the side of somebody because they're the more popular student. Right? So what a district is legally obligated to do is to figure out what happened, investigate, and keep everybody safe. So the challenge is that sometimes it's not always easy to figure out what happened. But it should never be that we're going to believe one student because they're popular. Yeah, you don't, you never want to blame the victim. Well, that's why, part of the reason for this is to make sure you all know your rights. Right? We should never be in a situation where somebody who's being victimized is blamed and it's their fault for being victimized. But sometimes, you know, it might be that we're not blaming a child, but there could be a need to help that child with their social skills. There could be a need to help that child develop a different network of friends so that they don't feel the need to try to connect with that other student. That's not blame, but that's strategies that could reduce the chance something happens again going forward. So that's part of the way you want to think about issues like this, right? Let's figure out, how do we brainstorm to reduce the chance we have this happen yet again? Okay. I can tell you that there are a number of confirmed bullying cases. Right? So you don't always get to see that information, right? You don't get the details about other cases that you don't personally know about. But there are lots of confirmed bullying cases where the district does investigate and does say, yes, this happened and is imposing consequences. They just can't tell you what consequences they're imposing on other kids. But you do have a right, all of you have a right to know statewide or district-wide exactly how many confirmed bullying cases there are, school by school. That's all public information. You have a right to see that. So you can ask the district for that information. Principal can show you where to find that. It's all, it's all out there. So you can know the statistics. I'm not sure exactly where the data is, but I know that it's all publicly available. So, you know, you make the request and you get to see that information. Over time, you get to see this year, last year, prior years, school by school, you get to see that information. So, you know, part of what we want is for you all to know your rights and to be able to understand. You get to know both. You get to know how many alleged incidents there were, how many confirmed incidents there were, what the characteristics were, if there were confirmed cases. That's all public information. There's something called the Student Safety Data System that has this information for the entire state, but then it's available for each district and broken down. So, you know, it's really good for everybody to know what's happening in your schools. We do have links for additional resources, so I give you a link here to information the Department of Ed puts out, including a detailed summary of your rights as parents. So that link at the bottom is for DOE Resources. We gave this to the district. I believe they're also putting this out on their website, this PowerPoint. So this gives you lots of extra resources to make sure you know your rights. I'll jump past a couple of these things. The department did change their model policy for looking at bullying issues going forward. We give you a link to that as well. Of bullying? Okay. Yes, so if a student is found guilty of bullying, that is in that student's record and it's part of the data, you don't get to know who the student is, but you get to know that there was a confirmed incident in this school. So we have to protect confidentiality, you know, the public doesn't get to know who the student was, but you can know, yes, there was a confirmed case in this school. Yes, parents are absolutely entitled to be notified of the outcome of the investigation. Parents of both the alleged victim and the aggressor. On both sides, you have a right to know that, absolutely, good question. So I mentioned this, I might not have mentioned this one yet, that you could even have a case where there are good intentions and you still have bullying. A little odd, but just to understand. So the, again, the question that you want to ask legally is what should a student understand about their behavior? So this was a case involving a high school student. They were worried about their friends maybe having an eating disorder, the student had lost a lot of weight. So what do their friends do? They go to this student and say, hey, we're worried about you. She says, I'm fine, I don't have any problem. They don't believe her, they go to her boyfriend. And they say, you know, what's going on, you know, we're really worried about our friend, she might have an eating disorder. And the boyfriend then talks to a bunch of other people in the school. Next thing you know, there's rumors spreading around the school that this one girl has an eating disorder. That ended up being a bullying case. Think about all the harm that can be caused when you have people all over the school talking about a student who might have an eating disorder. Even though the students who sort of started the rumor weren't trying to do something harmful, you should know that the way you're handling this by high school, there's a real chance you're going to do something that is harmful. So this doesn't happen very often, but once in a while, you could even have good intentions if you haven't thought it through. That's why even kids are expected to think through the implications of what they're doing. And then on the other hand, sometimes students are really resilient. This was a case where you had really inappropriate things said to a student who happened to be Asian. But the student was resilient and it didn't cause harm. It was still a code of conduct violation, but it wasn't bullying because it didn't cause emotional harm or substantial disruption.
So other students on the bus called this student a know-it-all.
Yes.
Said they hope the student would fall and get brain damage.
Yes.
Found not to be an HIV.
Yes.
Okay, there lies the problem.
So.
If a kid could tell anybody to go fall and get brain damage, Ali, go home and kill yourself because your dad died in a car crash, and that is not considered an HIV, got it?
There's more information on this case.
I'm reading it, so it, it appears to me whoever wrote this law was a bully themselves. So I will look up who wrote this law for the New Jersey legislation and I will call them out on it because it seems to me that they were.
In this particular case, I get. Yeah, no, New Jersey, it's a Reddington, New Jersey case. Reddington School District, SD is school, yeah, School District. So in this particular case, there's a little bit more to it and I didn't, you know, for the sake of just shortness in the PowerPoint, I didn't include it. Turns out, when the district investigated, the student who was the target of that comment was a straight A student who would get on the bus at the end of the day and taunt the other students who were failing the same tests.
That's a whole different story.
And so that, I was, that's the part I was going to say. So when the district investigated, it turned out what you saw on the surface wasn't the full story. This student was kind of taunting the other kids, what's wrong with you? Why are you so dumb? Why are you failing? And they responded with, you're such a know-it-all, I hope you hit your head and get brain damage. So it's still not okay, but it changes the situation. Yes, yes, so thanks for raising it, absolutely. So the investigation process, just to make sure you understand the process, incident is reported. So you find out about an issue involving your child, please report it immediately. You report that information to anyone, they have to tell the principal, but why not take out the middle man and go right to the principal, right? So you have either option, but you report it. Whoever that staff member is who you tell has to go to the principal that same day. Principal assigns the case to an anti-bullying specialist who has to be a school employee. They don't have a choice, that's, that's New Jersey law. Parents are notified that there is an investigation that's been started. School gets 10 school days to do the investigation. Once they finish the investigation, they get two more days to write up a report. The report goes to the superintendent. Superintendent then has to get that information to the board. The parents are notified in writing within five days of the Board of Ed being informed about the outcome of the investigation. And then the parents have a right to a hearing. Yep, and you never hear back. So my suggestion again, in a case like that, is that you want to follow up and you want to follow up in writing and say, I would like to know the outcome of the investigation. And once the superintendent has signed off on it, now you get to know the outcome of that investigation. And you get to know that it is going to the Board of Ed and they will be informed. And you get to know you have a right to a hearing if you disagree with the outcome. Private, private, yeah, absolutely. It's, it would be completely inappropriate for that to be publicly. No, 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 this is completely private and, you know, you're not using names at all. So the board then gets the information, you might ask for a hearing. Whether or not you do, the next month, the board votes. So it gives you a chance, if you want, to ask for a hearing first. But if you disagree with the outcome, the board would vote at the next month to either affirm, reject, or modify the decision reached. You get notified about that as well. If you disagree, you still can appeal. You could appeal to the commissioner if you think that the district got it wrong at that stage. Or if you think that there was some violation of state or federal discrimination law, you could pursue that in state or federal court. So you still have all those rights available to you. It is, you know, I've been saying this all along, it's critical to share information as soon as possible. And if you feel like there's some misunderstanding or your issues aren't being addressed, putting issues in writing is really important. It protects you, it protects your child, it documents that the information was clearly communicated and it helps the district to make sure that there's no misunderstanding about exactly what happened. It's important to monitor your child's social media use, so I do give you a link here to something called the Cyberbullying Research Center. If a child is bullied both in person and online, the danger to that child skyrockets. And, you know, school officials need to know that. And sometimes your child might be engaging in that behavior and you might not be aware of, you know, what your child is doing. So this gives you some strategies to kind of monitor social media use. If there's a confirmed bullying case? It's not the district's fault if there is an allegation or a confirmed case. If the district ignores issues, doesn't respond to them, has a climate that's not safe, that's where schools face, you know, more serious repercussions. So every school district in the state is monitored by the state of New Jersey. They do look at issues of overall school climate and culture and all of that is monitored. But any particular bullying incident, you know, you could have the best school in the world and you could still have a bullying incident. Things could still happen. The key then is what are we doing about it? How are we responding to it? How are we trying to make sure we don't have this continue to happen over and over again? So a couple of key points to remember, once staff members learn about an incident that meets the definition, now the train, I like to say the train has left the station. You can't say to a, a school principal or other school official, I'm telling you about this incident, but I don't want you to investigate. Because now they've heard about a potential bullying issue, they really don't have a choice. District has to investigate. Well, that all needs to be documented if it's not happening because that is the state law, right? So. Yes. Yeah, so the training that.
So now, now we know that there is a severe issue in this school district because if they're supposed to do it, even if I say I'm not doing an HIV.
It, yeah. The key is. Well, part of what we're trying to do here is to make sure everybody knows their rights, right? So that's why I'm here. So if you describe something, right? If you describe something that meets New Jersey's definition of bullying, if we describe something that meets New Jersey's definition of bullying, then it has to be investigated, whether it happened or not. Now, saying one child hit another student doesn't meet New Jersey's definition of bullying. Saying one child hit another student because of the student being overweight or because of the student's race or disability or religion or ethnicity, that meets New Jersey's definition. Unless we figure out the motive. You have to have a characteristic, and that's not Bayonne, that's the state of New Jersey. No, no, not at all, not at all, because remember, bullying isn't the only issue. There's lots of other issues that kids get disciplined for. So you can have lots of other code of conduct violations. You could have one student, you know, assaulting another student and it still has to be addressed, even if it's not bullying. But we can't call, I'm just saying, this is a bullying presentation, right? So we can't call it bullying unless you have the characteristic piece. And that's not Bayonne's fault, that's the state of New Jersey that. Sure. Yeah, and of course I can't comment on a specific incident, but hypothetically, hypothetically, what you're describing sounds like an incident the district has to investigate and. Well, but that's sort of a passing the buck issue because that's also a law enforcement issue to investigate, so. But you said there was a video that showed the incident. Yeah, yeah. So part of what we're doing here is to make sure you understand your rights and know how to document and pursue issues, right? So again, I'm not able to comment on any specific incident, but I want you to know your rights. Please. Yeah, what we're seeing across the state is that when we have issues like this and parents know their rights and know how to document and pursue the issues, you have a much greater chance of protecting your child. So, you know, I'm, this is my piece of the puzzle, is to try to make sure everybody knows their rights and understands the law. So I'm, I'm doing my best to try to get that across, yeah. Well, I mean, there were robo calls that went out to, I guess, but to all, but to all parents, right? I mean, that's a. Yeah, I mean. Well, but it's, yeah, yeah. I mean, my. Yeah, my, my view on this, I mean, for my two cents, it's never a waste of time for you to know your rights, right, for you to understand the law, for you to know, you know, the protections your kids are entitled to. Because that's how you can take the steps you need to take to make sure those rights are really protected. So the district is the one who's making sure that I'm out here telling you your rights about this. That's, that's why I'm here, they, they wanted me to come here to share this information. Another piece to keep in mind, if you want to know about a lot of other legal issues, we do this, it's free, it's out there for anybody. We have a podcast that puts out information on a million different legal issues, you know, half hour podcast episodes every Monday. So it's just another way for you to get information on these topics. I hope this was helpful for all of you today. And anything we can do to, to give you more information, we're happy to do. And hopefully, I'm hoping by next time, we have a room full of parents coming out for the next session. So thank you, everybody, I'll stick around for anybody who has individual questions, but I know how busy you all are, thank you for taking the time to come out. Thanks, everyone. I'll stick around for anyone who wants to stick around.